Take the lead.
All right, we're called meeting to order then. Today is the second Tuesday of the month, seven o'clock. The date and time set aside for the regular meeting of the Nacusa Common Council. Could we have roll call vote please, or roll call please?
Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Breta?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
I entertain a motion to approve the previous common council minutes.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the previous common council minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertained a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who should I put down for the moves?
You can either mirror Larry, it doesn't matter.
Just pick a name.
Grab a name.
Pick a name, Joe, it's not important.
We got one.
Okay.
As long as you hear somebody say move, just grab one of us.
All right.
Okay.
I don't see any citizens, citizens joining the meeting, so we can move on to committee reports.
We've got one.
Do we?
Yeah. I don't see someone here.
Pam's here.
Oh, hey Pam. Yes, she is. Nick's here too.
Yeah, Pam, can you hear us?
She had, she had just tried calling me.
Oh, there's Joe. The other Joe.
Her concern was the, it was under new business, the dog ordinance part.
All right.
When, when concerned to the nature trail. Uh, let me see what she just sent me. Oh, she doesn't have any audio, is what it's saying.
Pam, can you hear us? Nod your head. No, she can't even hear us.
Yeah, I don't have her on my screen.
I've got her on screen, but uh, I've only got nine.
Yeah, you gotta swipe it to the left, Mayor. There's another nine on the, on the, if you swipe it to the left.
Oh, that's how you get everybody.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. This just make y'all smaller.
All right, I guess we'll move on then, to committee reports. First committee report, Ways and Means, Chairman Coon.
I'm gonna wing it, cause I don't have anything in front of me.
Go for it.
Oh, Ways and Means, uh, let me see. Uh, Ways and Means had one meeting to report. I make a motion to accept the minutes as recorded.
Second. Motion a second to accept the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
A Ways and Means Committee was held on Tuesday, April fourteenth at six forty-five PM via Zoom. Members present were Garrett Coon, Adam Behring. Uh, who else is on there?
Larry Groupsec.
Larry and Dan.
Dan, uh. Okay, Dan Downing and Larry Groupsec. Uh, number one, we audited the bills. Uh, number two, license applications, which was none. And, uh, number three, donation seminars, conferences, meetings, nothing there either, so, uh. No recommendations. Recommended data bills, recommended data bills.
Motion a second to adopt item number one of the Ways and Means Committee, uh, meeting. Roll call vote please.
Okay, who had a motion and a second again on that, please?
I made a motion. Or Garrett made the motion and I seconded. Brad seconded.
All righty. Who's gonna type this up for me, or just so I have something, or?
I'll get it.
Okay. All righty, um. Breta?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Behring? Adam? Oh, he froze up again. Larry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Adam, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can now.
Oh, there's Pam.
I thought his voice got awful high there for a minute.
Heal him.
There he is, now he's back.
Yeah.
And, uh. Uh, yes, for, uh.
Yes.
Adopting the item, item one of Ways and Means?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, moving on then, uh, Public Works, Chairman Groupsec.
Okay, if everybody can hear me, I'll get going. Public Works has one meeting to report on. I move to have the minutes accepted as printed.
Second. Uh, motion a second to accept the minutes of the Public Works Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Nacusa Common Council. Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand twenty, at five PM via video conference. Members present were Larry Groupsec, Curtis Breta, Garrett Coon, and Adam Behring. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlsen, Rick Schmidt from the DPW, Dan Downing, Brad Hamilton, Brian Groupsec, and Chief of Police Sean Woods. Item one, recommend the mayor sign agreement of five thousand dollars for five thousand dollars for the Wood County fifty-fifty road program. And, and Chip Seal first street from Alexander Avenue to North Street using Wood County fifty-fifty road program monies. Item two, recommend the purchase of staff's storage lockers at a cost of approximately five thousand three hundred dollars. Item three, recommend accepting revised job descriptions dated twenty twenty for the January twenty twenty for the Department of Public Works. Item four, recommend the repair of Point Bass sanitary sewer main at a cost of approximately eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Item five, recommend city council proceed with reconstructing utilities between Waterworks Road and Cedar Street. Replace the water main between Point Bass and Garrison. And repair manholes and catch basins as needed between Cedar Street and Prospect on Market Street. Item six, recommend the city enter into professional services agreement with MSA Professionals Services with the, with the contract amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. This professional service agreement is subject to final changes and agreements with MSA based upon the city attorney's review. Item seven, recommend city council authorize the mayor to execute a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures of a principal amount not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars for the utility repairs on Wood Avenue and Market Street. Item eight, discuss public works COVID-nineteen policy. Number nine, we really had nothing on there, so basically we've got the eight items. Um, before I ask for approval of any of these, I just wanted to check, I see we've got our attorney here. Is, have you had a chance to look at that yet?
So, so what specifically are you asking about? You, I had some noise in the background here.
Okay, uh, for this one here, it's, it's a professional services agreement with MSA.
The MSA contract?
Right.
Uh, yes, I, I did have a chance to look at it, it's pretty, pretty lengthy. Uh, MSA is getting either better or worse depending on your interpretation. Um, but I, I did send some notes to Rick about it, uh, back and forth. I mean, generally speaking, it's a pretty, um, you know, the, the, certainly the city's worked with MSA before. Uh, you know largely what you're getting with them. Um, usually I have some issues, and I did, uh, again, this time with the, with some of the liability portions of the contract in particular. I, I feel that they, you know, and it's, it's what they do, they try to, uh, limit their liability and, uh, put as much on the, on the city as they can, which just kinda, um, most engineering firms try to do that, MSA is better at it than most, but, um, I think that, uh, the, you can approve the underlying, um, the underlying work, uh, pending, uh, I, I guess, a final negotiation of those points on the contract. That would be my recommendation.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you'd be doing, would you be doing that for us then? The, our lawyer, attorney?
Yes, uh, if that, my, my goal would be, uh, between Rick and myself, that we would
Right.
the, uh, the terms finalized, but in terms of the substantive, uh, work to be done and what it is that they're proposing to, to actually, uh, the engineering work they're planning to actually carry out, the reports are, they're planning on drafting and all of that. That stuff all, is all fine, and if Rick's okay with it. It's just some of the, uh, legal issues that, uh, I would wanna have worked out, so just to be clear on that. But yeah, I can, I can negotiate that with the council's permission.
Should we, should we table number six then until you've had a chance to finish it up? So it's a pass.
What if, what if we, what if we hold it out separate and motion to approve it, uh, pending Rick and, uh, the attorney, uh, working out the, working out those details?
There's no.
That way it's ready to go, it doesn't have to come back.
I think, I think you can do that. I think you can do it that way.
Let's do that.
Okay, as long, as long as we're legal doing it that way.
Right.
Then, uh. Then we have to have a motion to, are we okay with it, the way it's worded though?
Uh, I, I think it would be appropriate to amend the motion, just to say, um, just to add that, uh, uh, to, to provisionally accept it with the, uh, the attorney and director of Public Works to finalize terms. And if we're not able to do that, then that way, uh, it really, it wouldn't be fully accepted. So you're not committing to anything with MSA, you're not committing Dan to put, uh, Dan and Joe to put pen to paper on it until, uh, Rick and I are, are satisfied with, uh, the language.
So let, so let's do the rest of the items and hold that one for, for separate, for a separate vote, and with an, with an amendment on it. Could we do that?
Yeah, I think that, that's the proper way to do it.
That's, that's, that way we're kosher on all of it, buddy.
Okay. Okay, so with that being said, I'll move to adopt items one, two, three, four, five, and seven.
Second.
Second.
Gotta go?
I do.
Motion and a second to adopt items one, two, three, four, five, and seven of the Public Works Committee report. Uh, roll call vote please.
Downing?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Behring?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Breta?
Yes.
All right, then, uh, number six. How do we amend, amend number six? Is that the proper way of doing it?
Well, all we'd have to do, wouldn't we, is make a motion to, uh, approve.
Make a motion to adopt, and then.
Someone has to, someone has to move to amend the, uh, the motion. Or to, to amend that motion, and then that amendment has to be, um.
Reworded.
Nick, that's just a recommendation to the council. You know, these, these are all recommendations, we have to make motions to, on these recommendations, so if we'd make a, a motion to, when we have to just make a motion to approve it pending, uh, Rick and Nick going over, uh, going over to parts that we have discussed, or something like that.
Yeah, that's right. I, you're right, I misunderstood the, um, the recommendation versus it being a motion. Sorry, I must have, I had a Port Edwards meeting at six.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you got two different places, so yeah.
Yeah. Not a problem. Okay, move to adopt item six with the amendment that, uh, Rick and our attorney work out the final details needed for the agreement. How's that?
Second.
Did that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. So we have a motion a second to adopt item six of the Public Works Committee Meeting Report, uh, roll call vote please.
Okay, so I'm gonna put down, uh, on this actual number six, what's italicized? Should I strike that out then? Is this, so we're just having, uh, so we're adopting item six for the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred, uh, subject to, uh, uh, Public Works Director and City Attorney, uh, working out final details or something like that, is that, um, that work?
Yes, I believe that will work.
That would work, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Nick, you on board with that one?
Yes.
Okay, who seconded that, please?
Brad did.
Brian?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Breta?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Behring? Adam?
Last Adam again.
He's froze again. I'm so cold.
Yes.
Got him.
Okay, we're good.
All right, moving on then, uh, next committee report, Property Recreation and Human Affairs, Chairman Groupsec.
Property Recreation and Human Affairs has one meeting to, to report on. I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion a second to adopt the minutes of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs Meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
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 To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council. A Property Recreation and Human Affairs Meeting was held on Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand twenty, at six PM via Zoom meeting. Members present were Brian Groupsec, Curtis Breta, Adam Behring, and Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance was Rick Schmidt of the DPW, Mayor Dan Carlsen, Garrett Coon, Larry Groupsec, Dan Downing, Police Chief Sean Woods, Joe Kaiser, and Kurt Machow with Beer Becker. Number one, discuss the housing study and Peckham Road for forty acre development. And number two, discuss the city of Wisconsin Rapids Quad Facility.
No.
My action necessary.
Got her.
Oh.
Uh, next on the agenda is old business. Uh, is there any old business that needs to come forward? Hearing none, now we move on to new business. Uh, the first item is to waive the municipal code, uh, for the boat launch fees during the COVID-nineteen crisis. Uh, Sean, or Nick, you wanna?
Well, the, the reason behind this was just to limit the contact with the registration station at the boat launch. Uh, that's the only reason, just so there wasn't, you know, touching.
I make a motion to approve.
And, just to be clear for everybody, this isn't, uh, per se, uh, like, a, a motion for the, that the, the council is bringing for a new action, this is something that my understanding is, that Dan, you, you directed with, as, uh, an emergency as, as city mayor, is that correct? Yeah, so what the council is doing a, at this point is, is essentially, uh, blessing that decision by the mayor. The mayor has the authority to do that on his own, but it's, it's recommended that it be brought to the council and addressed here, just so that, um, all of the, the actions that the mayor is taking, uh, under the emergency powers, which are really broad, uh, as a matter of fact, are actually being done in a transparent manner, and that, uh, the council and the, the city is aware. So that's what this is all, all about. Does that make sense to everybody?
It, yes, it makes sense, and it's, you know, why, why take a chance on bringing something down to City Hall, and then Joe and, and, uh, anybody else down there getting it, yeah, it, yeah, Bobby, yeah, thank you, Joe. It's, and I, again, I make a motion to approve, if that's needed.
I'll second. Uh, motion a second to waive the municipal code regarding the boat launch fees during the COVID-nineteen crisis. Could we have a roll call vote please?
Coon?
No.
Breta?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Behring?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Uh, next item is the Dog Ordinance Enforcement on Lynn Creek Nature Trail.
Yeah, so I had, I'd received a call from Pam, who's also on the meeting here, and I got in touch with Rick right away. And there's problems with dog waste on the trail, and, and
Serious.
pets not being leashed, you know, and, and my question to Rick was, you know, do they need to follow what we would, whether they were walking down Main Street, or, just to get clarification on that, I mean, it, it should go without saying that people should be cleaning up after their animals, and, you know, I think we should probably at least, at least get some signage down there, and then, you know, the leashing aspect, the more, the more I think about it, you know, I, I guess I can see both ways. I don't think it hurts to have them on the leash, um, you know, just so we can just say it's, it's that way across the board, um, and I told Pam I would get it on this meeting, and wanted to open it up for some discussion if, you know, to see what everyone else had thought about it, and if we can get some signage down there, cause, I mean, there's, there should be no reason we're not, people aren't picking up after their dog on that trail.
Well, that, that's a, that's in our ordinance, is to clean up after your dog, you know, wherever you are. One, and two, it just makes perfect sense to clean up after your animal, there's no reason we can't put a couple of signs up, I don't think we need to do anything special. And as far as the leash ordinance, I think it's in our ordinance, or the leash law, I think it's in our ordinance, if they're off your property, you're supposed to have leashes, isn't it?
If you look at the, um, uh, park ordinance, it says, and, and I'm assuming we would consider Lynn Hill Trail part of our park system. It does specifically state that the dogs must be leashed and, uh, taken care of, so. Certainly within our right, uh, there, there are some standard dog signs, so if the council's good with it, I'll, I can be directed to, uh, have signs put up at all the entrance locations, if that's, uh, what you deem appropriate.
I shall move.
The other question I had though was, um, earlier in the year, we had that group, they were gonna do the, uh, like, the dog, the frisbee and stuff like that up in the, that one side of the industrial park. I'm assuming that wouldn't apply to them, if, you know, not that they're gonna be having an event now, but, uh, something to just keep in mind.
Right. Yeah, and, and in that situation, I believe that they, uh, had the dogs on leash or in kennels, but only, they were only loose when they were running that frisbee. So you're right, but that would, that would have to come back to this, uh, to the Park, Property Rec Committee.
All right, sounds good. I, I would think too, that if they were reckless with that, then we just wouldn't allow them to be up there anymore.
Yeah. Yeah. Be simple.
More so for finger pointing from, you know, if someone's saying, hey, my dog is running around on a trail, off the trail, whatever it may be. And then you got the other, and they point the finger at the other group that says, hey, they can have events here, you know. It's just one of those things that if you don't have, if it's clear, and you don't have to have the discussion, then it's that much easier.
Yeah.
All right. Well, set then?
Good, good to go at my end.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is ambulance personnel resignation, the Chief Kirkfire.
Yep, we actually have three EMTs that have retired or want to retire, we approved them last night in our meeting. Um, if you want the names, we have Rebecca, common spelling Mathys, M-A-T-H-Y-S. We have Kendra Marco, M-A-R-C-O-U-E-X, and George Taub, T-A-U-B. All have resigned in the last month.
I said, uh, entertain a motion to accept the resignations?
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion a second to accept the resignations from the ambulance, uh, department, uh, could we have a roll call vote please?
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Behring?
Yes.
Breta?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, uh, to entertain a motion to approve the various monthly reports.
So move.
Move.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the, uh, monthly reports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is approval of the claims, uh, Mr. Rush.
Um, did you guys get my emails for the, I think Bobby sent you an email for two of the
Yeah.
bill lists, and then I sent you one for the, the third one? We, we, we got those, uh, sometime later, maybe we'll have to get together and, uh, at later date or something, and maybe sign off on these. I guess, uh, um, if that's okay with you guys? When, when we get to.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, that's, if that's what you need, Joe, that's not a problem.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what if we just hold on, you know, approve them, you know, however we gotta do it, and then hold them till, hopefully the May meeting, we'll be able to meet. And then, uh, and then they can sign them there with, along with the May stuff.
Well, didn't we have the discussion last week about the, not really the necessary, not really to be necessary that they be signed?
Oh, and I thought Joe was just telling, I thought, as far as I'm concerned, if they, they send him a email back stating that brew all the, all the bills, they're done. They don't, they don't, they don't have to be signed. The signing thing, like I said, was just a, it was a, uh, something started years ago when we had a few bills. And like I said, the chairman had to sign all the bills at one time, and then it was signed, then they, we moved it to just sign the, uh, last page of the, of the, of the packet, you know, which, of each packet of bills. And that, you know, is, like I said, as long as you got something joking attached to the bills, I'd say that's good.
Nick, you have an opinion?
I, I, I mean, I don't, I mean, they, I, I know what your standard procedure has been, uh, throughout your time. I guess it's not, like, this is not an issue that I've, that I've dealt with recently, so, um, I just, I haven't spent, I haven't looked at it at all. Um, I, I mean, I suspect that, uh, that Councilman Hamilton's correct about this, but I, I, I just don't, don't wanna say without being certain, having looked at it.
Yeah.
Uh, well, if, if Joe feels more comfortable about it, couldn't we just stop in on one, on one basis, you know, here and there, and you know, it's not like you gotta meet down there to sign them, I mean.
Oh, no, 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 no.
If you would feel better about, if you'd feel better about that, Joe, we can just stop in on our own sometime, you know, like, I could stop in in the morning and sign off on my portion, and the rest could do whatever, or, or we could just leave it the way it is too, I'm, I'm fine with either way.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna lose any sleep over it, cause we do have the committee report where you adopted the bill lists and stuff anyway, so, uh.
Right.
And then I, hopefully this won't be a, an extended period where we, we can't meet together, but, uh. But anyway, we do have the three bill lists, uh, committee, Ways and Means Committee, two hundred and fifty. Council, four fifty-five. Mayor, eight hundred. Public Works, two fifty. Property Rec, two forty-five. I guess, are we gonna say, um, Adam is the secretary then, give him up?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that'll be two fifty for that, and, uh, Airport Commission, Brad at one meeting was April second. You didn't have anything else beyond that, did you, Brad?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay, so we got the three lists, and then, uh, case lets.
Make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second. Motion a second to, uh, approve the bills, uh, roll call vote please.
Brian?
Yes.
Coon? Garrett?
Garrett, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Breta?
Yes.
Behring?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Are there any other issues, as provided by law, that need to come forward?
One quick question for you, Dan.
Oh, go ahead.
If I may, um, are you planning on doing a reorg next week right away? I'm just wondering as far as my own scheduling at work.
Joe and I are, didn't really.
Joe and I are, didn't really haven't talked yet. I was hoping to, I guess, we'd almost have to.
Yeah, traditionally, we've had it on, uh, that third Tuesday, so it'll be a week from tonight.
Larry, are you, are you off?
It would, it would be next week, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we would have a, um. Generally, we've had like a triple header. We've had a Ways and Means.
Right.
And then we would have the special statutory meeting and, uh, and then the real organizational meeting.
Okay. Okay, no, that'll work for me. I mean, I'm, I'm on days next week. I just wanted to make sure, if we went any farther than that, I'd start hunting around for a trade.
The times are, uh, pushed up quite a bit. I, I don't have the times right now, but it, like, this is.
No, that, that's not important, just as long as I know.
Five, five fifteen and five thirty or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
The last one's the longest one, so we gotta, mostly because we gotta prove the, uh, which newspaper we use.
Right.
Yeah, it could take a while.
Yeah, well, usually it does.
So go ahead and do it next Tuesday then?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Yeah, that'll work.
I'm fine. I got, well, I got the next three Tuesdays off, so it's, that's just fine, however you wanna do it, as long as the rest of the guys are good.
You didn't have any, you didn't have anything extra, uh, did you, uh, Dan, as far as that you wanted on the agenda? Uh, just a regular, standard, uh, agenda and stuff?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
All right, I guess, uh, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody who will put this together.